Progressive session, we are now back in open session and we will now have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Scott.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, free, and just as all.
Good, thank you all. First up is open forum. Any open forum items from the board, from the public? Yes, Scott?
So actually, there's two which are coincidentally related, but not really. So first of all, this is National Peace Officers Week in honor of our police officers who protect and serve our community. Tomorrow is Police Officers Memorial Day, which is when we recognize those who've fallen in the line of duty. And tomorrow on the Warland DC, they will add a shocking 282 names, 282 names to the list of those who've been lost in the past year. So appreciation to our police and those of you listening, you know, give them a thank you when you see them on the street. Secondly, one of our officers had the misfortune of having a house fire. So on Friday, this coming Friday, at the Franco-American Club, from four o'clock until 10 o'clock, there is a pig roast, $10 a head donation for Officer John Hesslin. I know John, but was back about 15 years ago. I got pulled over for turning a stop sign into a yield sign. And I got the lecture from John that I'm told he gives everybody. Unfortunately, a warning, so, but yes, if you would come out and support John and his family, Friday Franco, that would be great.
Chris, do you have any open forum items today?
I suppose we should mention the Apple Blossom Parade that's taking place
Absolutely.
next weekend. Hope everybody can come and hopefully have great weather for it.
Yeah, 10 o'clock.
Yep.
And this is our first meeting after the ballot vote, so we should welcome new members and re-elected members to elected committees in town. So John, congratulations and welcome. Also, we should, later on in the meeting, we'll acknowledge the budget that we're operating under. As described in many places in many ways, this is a budget that does put us in a position where we're making a number of reductions, difficult, painful reductions, both in school and town. We'll make a commitment to basically sharing the information about what's actually happening as it happens, so people understand what the reductions are, what's already happened, what's coming up. And we can sort of track the impacts to residents and to the functioning of the town that will result from being on this budget. So, but a little bit later, we'll reiterate sort of what, just being absolutely clear what budget we're operating under, and we can answer any questions that people may have at that time. Any open forum items from the public tonight? Yeah, Megan?
Hi, Megan O'Connell, 44th South Chumsford Road. First, want to offer my congratulations to John on being re-elected. I do want to read a few thoughts I have on a few various subjects, not necessarily all related. One, I just want to offer out that I think it would be good if the Select Board reflected on how they read the Westford voters so wrong. When you look at the Select Board, the School Committee and Finance Committee voted collective 17 to 2, 89% in support of both questions, while only 44% of voters supported Q1 and 37% supported Q2. So I think it might be good for the Select Board to see where that disconnect is, you know, so that they can operate better in the future, to better represent the entire town. Along those lines, I would suggest that there should also be some more transparency regarding citizen activity forms. And the Select Board, I would urge you to implement a policy of periodically reporting CAFs that are received by whom, for what positions, and the actions taken. I'd further ask if the Select Board could provide that information for the board and committee appointments that are on the agenda for tonight, if there are other CAFs received for those positions, and how they were evaluated. I think that would be helpful to bring a spirit of transparency to how we operate here in Westford. I would also urge the Select Board to consult with the Finance Committee to consider using a portion of the stabilization free cash to increase the school budget for FY '25. According to the Finance Committee report for 2024 in Yuletide meeting, there is projected to be $1.4 million in free cash and stabilization fund reserves over the recommended 5% minimum as of June 30th of this year, which again, I would urge the Select Board to consider using to recover some of the potential lost teachers. I'd further urge the Select Board to consider creating a task force with a mandate to identify, evaluate, and make recommendations related to cost savings, increased efficiencies, and increased non-prop, two-and-a-half override revenues, including but not limited to those included in the budget task force report of last fall. I would suggest that the scope should also include the authority to discuss with nearby towns, potential for regionalization of certain services that could bring cost savings, as well as the ability to propose any needed warrant articles to further those. Lastly, I would just like to call the Select Board's attention to the annual report for the fiscal year end in June 30th, 2023, page 6, which contains what I believe is an unfortunate error. The DEI Committee is listed as the Diversity Equity and Exclusion Committee, which I think a number of residents feel might actually be reflective of the way that operates. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the typographical comments, and thank you for all those comments. We won't spend time on it tonight, but we are collecting information from both our own voter turnout, trying to interpret what that means, looking at other towns and see how they approached similar, you know, budget challenges and sort of what we see in those towns in terms of what the results are. So there is a period of reflection that will come together as we are able to walk through and gather more data. So great suggestion and something that we're planning to do. Also, Kristen, a little bit later, we'll be talking about our approach to pursuing some of the efficiencies, point out in the budget task force, and also any new efficiency ideas that may emerge. So we do have an approach to that that we'll detail, or at least explain a little bit a little bit later in the meeting. So thank you for that. Any other comments tonight?
And I don't see any online.
Okay. Great.
Actually, I would say that, actually, we, at some point, should consider what is our townwide policy, I think, on citizen activity forms, because they come in to the town clerk or...
They come into our office, actually.
Right. And then they go back out to the various committee chairs. And some of those committees share them, some of them don't. Some of them invite members, some of them assume that if they're interested, they'll show up. I don't think we actually have a directive to committee chairs as to how to handle that.
Sure.
We probably should have one.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Good, yeah. So thank you for that suggestion as well. Okay. If there's nothing else, we'll move towards 7:05. Reorganization of the Select Board. It's the practice of the Select Board after elections to reconsider who's in what position in terms of chair, vice chair, clerk. It has been the, I don't know if it's been a formal practice, but it's been the practice of the Select Board, except in extraordinary times like moving through COVID, like pursuing a town manager search. In most years, the officers do rotate. I think it's a good, healthy practice. And so with that in mind, I would like to nominate...
Actually, get to Chris.
Oh, sorry. We'll turn it back over to you.
Yes. So item five on the agenda, the reorganization of the Select Board. So currently, the slate is Tom Clay Chair, Scott Hazelton Vice Chair, and John Cunningham Clerk. Is there a nomination for, starting May 14th, 2024, for Chair of the Select Board?
I would like to nominate Scott Hazelton to be Chair of the Select Board.
Are there any other nominations? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. We'll do a roll call vote as John is remote. John?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay. So Scott, congratulations. Let you share the meeting.
I won't bang it, because I did it one time. So next door to business, to get a, appoint a vice chair. So I guess, are there nominations for Vice Chair?
I'd like to nominate Tom Clay for the position of Vice Chair.
Is there a second?
I guess I'll second.
Okay, thank you, John. So first, thanks to Tom. I think, you know, some years, if you're Chair, you get it pretty easy. Some years, if you're Chair, you get a really, really hard year. Tom got a really, really hard year. So one of the hardest ones actually probably we've had. It's hard to tell COVID versus this, but yeah, thank you. Great, great job.
My pleasure.
And the outcome was what we all voted for, but it's the effort, the communication with the town, you know, that sense of communication and getting everyone involved was certainly there, probably the best we've ever done. In fact, that's probably certainly the best we've ever done at communicating with the town, so thank you. Also, with that, I guess we have a motion to second. So all in favor of Tom for Vice Chair. Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Adam and I. Any nominations for Clerk?
I would nominate John to continue in the role as Clerk.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. John, do you want to accept? Accept?
I'd pass it on to Chris, I think.
Okay. With that in mind, I will nominate Chris.
And I assume that John's going to second, so...
Chris, will you accept?
Yes.
Okay. So all in favor of Chris as Clerk. Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
I.
Aye.
I would just like to thank Tom for his leadership during most of my first year here as well. He and I worked very closely with all of you, and just thank you very much for
Yeah, no, it's my pleasure.
...this past year.
Actually, I did, you know, chat with Tom this morning, and all those budget task force ideas that people had that he was promoting, he's still going to do them, so...
I'm not going anywhere.
So with that in mind, we have to move on to our seven, 10 agenda, which is a public hearing for National Grid, poll petitions to relocate, yeah, for a joint or identical poll location. First, you'd open the public hearing as motion to do so.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Okay, so welcome to our Friends of National Grid. The floor is yours.
Hi, I'm Alec. I'm representing National Grid. And it's with regard to relocating a poll on Boston Road, 128 feet southeast of the intersection of Boston Road and Hildreth Street and Lincoln Street.
Is that on the map, please?
I'm working on it, yep.
And, yeah, eight, eight and a quarter feet back towards Crown Road.
We'll get a picture up, because those are home, because it's not visualized, opposed to kind of guessing where you are.
It's right off of Number Six, Boston Road.
Right.
Yeah.
One second.
Just while it's coming up, could you just explain the reason for the need to relocate the poll?
I'll have to have a colleague explain. It's a DOT job.
Yes, this is part of the DOT job that's going up and down, just by Conley.
Thank you.
It's part of the DOT job that's going all the way up and down Boston Road, and this section is part of the town maintaining part of it, and anytime that's, they're widening the road, moving the sidewalks back, so that's why this poll would need to be, in order to do that, we need to move back eight, eight point two-five feet and 11 feet toward the Crown Road.
Okay, so I guess, it was behind me, it's some of them are there.
Let me see if I can get that off for you. So it's part of our town project?
Right, so it's part of the main street reconstruction project, right? So we, thank you for doing it, because we have to have it done.
Boston Road reconstruction project.
What did I say?
Main street.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's like a main street.
That's why Thomas shared, right?
Right, right.
So is all the approvals in order from highways?
Yes, we have DPW's approval in the packet. Kyle Fox is on the line if you do need to hear from him.
Any questions for Kyle from the board? Anybody from audience or online? I've not seen...
I guess I do have a quick question, sorry.
Go ahead.
I just want to make sure that I believe the sidewalk is on that side of the road, and this will be on the other, like, where will it be relative? Is it between the road and the sidewalk, or will it be on the outside of the sidewalk, closer to the butters?
On the backside of the sidewalk.
Backside, okay. Thank you.
No comments? Okay, so is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Dan? I'm sorry, Dan. John?
Aye.
Adam and I. And thank you very much.
All right, so we'll be in touch with the proper paperwork.
Question to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. So, next item, to review the, proof of timing, Adam moderator.
Came right in, boom!
Review the 2024 Annual Town Meeting. So I just, upfront before you, I'll give you the floor, but thank you for a marvelous job. You know, all kinds of interlocking parts, complications, 2,000-plus people, borrowed remotes and chairs, amazing work, so thank you for pulling that off, and happy to hear your reflections and thoughts for the future.
Yeah, well, I first have to start by just adding to that, that it was not by any means all me. I mean, there were so many people who made so much effort to make that meeting work the way it did. Police, fire, facilities, the town manager's office, the town clerk's office, the Commission on Disabilities, the Rec Department, the Council on Aging. I mean, it was just an unbelievable effort by everyone, so I really want to thank everybody. I'm sure I'm missing people, but there were like a couple of dozen volunteers helping with the check-in, and it was just amazing. It was really amazing how much effort we had coordinated there, and that's what made it work. It was a community effort, it really was. And the voters, you know, all the voters who came, all the people, this board and all the other boards that spent so much time and effort putting information out there ahead of time, all of that is what made it work, not by any means me standing at the front of the group, so, yeah. So I don't, Kristen, if you have observations that you want to make?
Yeah, absolutely. So in addition to the thank yous that Angela gave, also want to thank the high school cafeteria staff. They helped serve the lunch. Actually, three of them volunteered their time, which, to save the town money, and I want to thank them publicly. I thanked them earlier today. I want to thank Angela and the Select Board and the Finance Committee and the School Committee for their support, because we would not have been able to pull it off without the support of the Reserve Fund Transfer and all of the boards and committees pulling together. All of the staff, we have certainly thanked them in person, but want to thank the staff again, because their immense efforts did not go unnoticed. I think it was a town meeting that we received maybe one complaint or concern out of a town of almost 25,000 people, so that was amazing to see those thank yous.
I just also want to mention Westford CAT
Yes.
and the League of Women Voters. And again, I know I'm leaving people out, but everybody who was involved just went above and beyond. I think, to, just to take away, one of the things that was really interesting had to do with Mike and the Commission on Disabilities putting together a lot of new ways of handling people who might not have been able to or thought they were able to attend the meeting before, and creating systems that allowed them access. I think that was tremendous, and I feel like that'll continue in the future and just get better. I think a lot of people who have never, clearly, there were a lot of people there who may have never attended town meeting before, and I think they came away with an idea of exactly what it is, which they may not have known before exactly how important it is, and hopefully many of them will continue to attend in the future. Yeah, so all of that is really important.
Absolutely. You know, we're still collecting feedback, learning. We were not the largest town meeting this spring, Acton had over 2,500 people at their annual town meeting. They did it indoors. I know, we just missed it by about 400 people. Just want to let the board and the public know that we are planning modifications to the Westford Academy Cafeteria and the Abbott Gymnasium to allow for large indoor public meetings, excuse me, town meetings, and we hope to have that in place by late summer for whenever the next special town meeting comes up. Obviously, the special will be October 21st, as you've scheduled, but if there is a need for another special, we will be ready for that. We're looking at continuing those ADA modifications for an indoor location and venue, and again, taking feedback how we can. I also want to publicly thank, and you saw that in your packet, the Towns of Groton and Uxbridge for lending their clickers, and the Technology Department for, they spent hours and hours reprogramming the clickers and then returning them back to their order, and our vendor, Meridian, was just fabulous. They actually came out and saved the day on one of the matters that we had about two days before the meeting.
And that wasn't all the IT department did either.
No.
I did forget them, that, you know, with the screens and the sound and the audiovisual, all of that was a tremendous effort by the IT department, and that was really essential in making everything visible and audible to all the people who were present, so.
And the free generator was a nice touch.
Yes, FEMA offered a free generator, or MEMA, our Massachusetts partner, so that was...
Did we get all the clickers back? I know we were short.
I believe there's still a few outstanding, so if you check your purses or pockets or car consoles, and you see a clicker, we'd appreciate it you to return it to the town clerk's office. I think there may be 10 or so outstanding clickers.
They've been coming back in.
Yes, they have been.
Mike indicated that they're trickling back in, so people are finding them and bringing them in, which is just exactly what we need.
Yes, when you borrow, it's a pain not to be able to give them back.
Yes, exactly. We don't have any other formal report other than, you know, if anyone has any feedback or interests or needs for future town meetings, we're certainly taking those under consideration.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the one suggestion I had, which was a portable mic, because as we have the one, this person was disabled, couldn't get the walker through, if we had been able to pass that around, we have that sort of marked section for those who are mobility impaired. If we had a portable mic for them, that'd be good.
Yep.
That's all I had, but, I mean, which tells how well it's planned, that's the minor... Maybe a pair of monoculars, so you can see over the heads to the speakers at A.
I've already got that. I'm going to tie ribbons around the microphones this time, because that's, they just disappear that far away, they just disappear into the background, but if there's something hanging from them, I'll be able to see them and determine whether the people standing around are actually standing by the microphone or if they're further back.
Tom?
Just, so, also marvelous job, and in particular, the resilience to have the experience that we had in October, and bounce right back and get right back to work figuring out how to make really, I think, the best, most well-run, most thoughtful town meeting experience, at least that Westford's ever seen. So it's, it's not easy to, we should just recognize the fact that to have an experience like that and to very, very quickly move to the state of the art in what I think was a really excellent job is just, it's a testament to you, but it's a testament to everybody who worked on it.
And also to the, all the voters who made suggestions from the last, from the October meeting particularly, because we took every one of those suggestions, as you know, seriously, and looked into whether or not they could be used in a way that would improve the meeting. So that, just building on what Kristen said before, if people have suggestions, this is definitely a place where they can make them. I'm absolutely willing to listen to anybody's suggestions, and I know, I know the town administration is as well, and you can always contact me through the moderators' page, through the email on the moderators' page, or through Town Hall, and we'll absolutely take any suggestion seriously.
We expect to have a couple of high engagement meetings coming up. It'll be in a later meeting that we'll talk about, sort of the layout of how we want to do the indoor, what the capacity will be, sort of logistics of how that'll work.
And while I do feel that this was a very, very controver, not controversial, but very, an issue that many, many people were interested in, and that is why we had such high attendance, I really feel like we may have higher attendance than we've had in the past as a general matter going forward. Obviously, there'll still be some meetings that are going to be small, but I think our average number is going to creep up. I don't, I don't think that the people who became involved in the October meeting and in this meeting are all just going to go away. I think, I think once people get involved in this type of participatory democracy, it becomes something that they do on a more regular basis. At least, I hope so. I mean, I hope that's what happens.
Also, when it works, when it runs well, so I was impressed with how you handled the, you know, one, two, three, four, sort of a general discussion of the sort of concept, and then going to one, so it was not sort of, you know, by the article, you know, rigorously following a playbook. It was, I won't say, it was creative, you know, it was a way to get a lot of holistic view of the budget without, you know, looking at it piece by piece. But I think, that kind of, I think, ability to have broad concept discussions, people like that, so that...
And I think that, I mean, I owe some credit to the Access to Town Meeting Committee for that, too, for just looking at things a little more broadly in general and not sticking to what we've always done in the past, because that's the way we've always done it in the past. And I think people do appreciate that. I think the people who are coming to town meeting now really don't care how we did it 20 years ago. They want us to do it in the most efficient way possible now, in this day and age, so that's, that's really a goal.
Or 20 years ago, as the case may be. So Chris, thoughts, Chris, John, if you want to add anything?
Well, you know, I only heard positives, so I took the opportunity to try to walk around, you know, see what it looked like from the back, talk to people in the back, you know, sat on the track for a while, watched all the people go through, and, you know, again, everybody thought highly of the experience, which, when you consider you're giving up, you know, your Saturday to sit on a field and participate in democracy, that's great, right? I think that's really important. I was also really impressed with the accommodations that we made, so I had a young gentleman at my table who was hearing impaired and was participating in the meeting, and I had some other residents who had contacted me about remote participation and were accommodated. So I think that was phenomenal, that we were able to pull that together in such a short amount of time, and I think, you know, it'll be great if we continue to build on that, of course, and, you know, make it even more accessible for folks, and that includes the potential of, you know, some sort of remote town meeting in the future. You know, we've had those conversations, reviewed some of the bills that are out there from our state legislature, and see where that takes us in the future. Might be very, another interesting challenge for our IT department to handle.
Yeah. Well, I think that that is really up to the legislature.
Yeah.
We can't do anything about it until they do something about it, and I'm not, I'm not sure where that's, that's, that's at a minimum, five years away, at a minimum, and that's only if somebody comes up with the technology, because it just doesn't exist right now, so. That the technology that is secure and checkable and safe doesn't exist right now, so.
John, you want to add?
Well, great job, Angela. It's just super all the way around. I don't think I've seen one run any better than that, especially that large size, so just great job, your part and town clerk and all the efforts that they put in there. It worked very smoothly, and you got the MBTA thing through very smoothly, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any comments from our attendees? I knew Dana would come forward.
Always, right? Diane Wood, 122 Depot, agree with what a great event it was and how smoothly it ran, having been involved in all of the, so, yeah, it was a win-win. Having said that, though, as the Select Board moves forward, or may move forward, on exploring or have the community explore potential alternatives for town meeting, whatever that may be, and that was at one point, you know, thrown out there, but we wanted to get through town meeting first, I was stunned by the fact, I knew there would be more voters at the ballot, but I didn't truly expect three times as many people actually voted on Election Day than attended. So just want to leave that out there. Obviously, people think it's much easier to come, and it is, you know, just to come to Stony Brook, cast their vote, and then leave, but I was really surprised at how many and what the difference was. But it was something like 7,000 versus 2,100. It was a big, big difference, and that was kind of an aha moment, I think. Regardless, just something to poke away, you know, legally, nothing may be able to be done about it in general as we move forward, but I'm going to keep it in my back pocket just to explore later and, you know, to see if there are any reactions, but the difference was really huge. That's all. Thank you.
Any online with the...
Not that I see right now.
Very good, well, thank you, and look forward to this one.
Thank you. See you next time.
Thank you, Angela.
335 item is a review of the fiscal year FY '25 budget. A question, you've got some comments there, I mean, we are where we are, given the elections, so.
Yeah, I don't know if, Tom, do you want me to start, or as a past chair, do you want to start?
Well, I think we've, so we have had a few questions, just to clarify what budget we are operating under. So we are operating under the budget that was voted on Article Four, which was, you may recall amended on the floor, so it does include the additional money that was allocated into the school budget. We will be, I don't want to speak out of turn, but there are a number of pieces and parts of the budget that are still kind of coming together, like final state numbers and other things. We'll come back and explain where that money will come from in a little bit, after we've got a little bit more confirmation of how these last pieces and parts move out. It, it could be that it's a free cash allocation, it could be that if there's additional state money that shows up in the final, final numbers, that we choose to use the money, that money, it could be some of each. We will come back and let you know how we're doing that, but aren't quite ready to, to do that yet. And just encourage everyone to, to participate in the upcoming, as we talked about many times, this is not a problem that's gonna go away, and the, some of the challenges will be even greater in the fiscal '26 budgeting process. So just, we really hope people will engage in that, help make us, help us make sure we're making the right set of trade-offs, we're presenting the right information to the public, and, so there'll be plenty of time for that, that'll start in the fall, if people want to weigh into that. I have had, people ask sort of how to get involved in, you know, broadly, and I think probably the best way is to jump in with the budget process, once we kick that off, come to the public hearings, make sure you're listening to what proposals and trade-offs are being explored, and, you know, the more people involved, the better. We're gonna make a better decision if we get more people involved. So, those are the questions I've heard.
Yes, so just to add to that, for members of the public or people watching, I did prepare a memorandum for the Select Board Packet this evening that just details that, under Article One at Town Meeting, which was the override budget, that did pass 1,190 yes to 694 no. However, the ballot question to raise the override funds failed at the ballot, 3,128 to 3,944. So I believe the Select Board's indication would be that we would not be revisiting an override question based upon that span. Just want to clarify that with you all this evening, in that we would fall back to the budget that was passed under Article Four with the amendment of $378,000 to the school budget, which the School Committee did discuss last night, which did pass by majority at Town Meeting, 1,226 yes to 128 no. Also wanted to draw members of the public's attention that we did detail what the cuts would be primarily in override versus no override one pager. I linked that to the memo as well, so people could get that handy, but there are commentaries about the positions that would be cut, or the services that would be cut, or other items from the budget. So again, probably can't see this from where you are, but again, it's a double-sided one pager for that. Myself and the Finance Department and other key department heads will be working on kind of a matrix to make sure that the depart, that the public knows what those cuts are. Again, there is no available money to reinstate other things that we are aware of. We're waiting for that state budget to come in. We may be able to revisit something in October, but it's highly unlikely. I'm still getting indications from the state that their revenues are quite down substantially. I received a notification from the Community Preservation Act state that, that our allocations are gonna be quite substantially lower than normal, 14% to be exact. So, and I will be looking for a meeting in June with the Select Board, the School Committee, and the Finance Committee to just start discussing the efficiency of the Budget Task Force. I'm already pursuing five of those, and want to make sure that I'm touching base with those boards and committee members, and then having a dashboard on our website and for other members to do it in other fashions, exploring the fleet fueling at DPW Garage, which is going to be in effect July 1st, I have every confidence of that, reviewing our healthcare, which I'm reviewing with the Health Insurance Trust, reviewing potential pay-as-you throw. We are gonna receive a report this evening from the Assistant Town Manager on what we're doing July 1st. That does not include pay-as-you throw, but it could be implemented into the future. Regionalization, already exploring those opportunities with various other municipalities and a series of other things. So I want to make sure that members of the public know that we're taking that very seriously. It's not, you know, it's not going to solve the problem, it may help it slightly. We're really not gonna see those revenues from MBTA communities, if at all, come into play until fiscal '27.
So, yeah, speaking for myself, I've got no desire to revisit an override. I don't think any of us do, given the, given that vote, I think it's pretty clear where we are, and others can volunteer their thoughts, too, but I guess my, my other question was, we discussed some kind of a, like a better monitoring agency, you know, some, kind of prep staff, other boards, to look at our budget sort of quarterly as we move forward to see how we're progressing. But is that something you want our input on? Is that something you want to handle from your office?
So I'd like to handle it from the administration level, if possible, but having those quarterly tri-board meetings with School Committee, Select Board, and Finance Committee to review that, and have the checks and balances, the members of the public would be invited to attend that. If the Select Board would like to explore a different opportunity, I'm happy to explore that as well.
Just to make sure, I mean, I know we will be monitoring, but just so the public knows, we are monitoring it. There's some regular feedback to the community that, that you'll be getting as we move forward, for good or bad. Hopefully, good, but so far not been good from the state side. Any other stuff?
I guess just to reiterate what Kristen just said, the, another good opportunity for engagement is this quarterly meeting. That'll be sort of where the, the work of the Budget Task Force gets sort of handed into for implementation, so we're gonna review all of the good ideas that have come out of that, any new good ideas. And then Kristen, as she just mentioned, is gonna select a couple areas for focus for each meeting. So if you have questions about how the town's spending money, if there's something you think we could be doing better to be more efficient, that's a great opportunity to come. There'll be purpose-specific meetings with all three boards. The only thing on the agenda will be budget monitoring, to Scott's point, and then also, what are we doing to pursue efficiencies? We have a big task in front of us to get as many efficiencies identified and implemented as we can. That allows to preserve more services in fiscal '26, so I think you'll see a lot of activity there. And if you're interested, and there was a lot of interest in different choices in the budget leading up to town meeting, it's a great way to get involved and engaged. And in some cases, there may even be like little investigation projects that need to happen, and so could, could be opportunity to actually do some work if people are interested and want to come to those meetings and raise their hand.
And I will just plug, there are three open seats available on the Finance Committee, so if people are interested in Finance Committee, the moderator has those citizen activity forms open until the end of June, I believe. So if people are really wanting to get involved by serving in that high-level board, please put those citizen activity forms in in the next few weeks.
Yes.
So Kristen, I'm sure you were gonna probably do this, but I had heard from some folks in Acton that they had recently undergone a pretty significant change of their town insurance program, and the feedback I got from the folks that I talked to was very positive. So one was a school teacher, another was a municipal employee. So I encourage us to, to maybe look to them.
Yep.
To see how they managed that and orchestrated that process, because they did not have apparently a lot of time to do it. So, you know, hopefully, we will have that time and be able to pull it off and maybe come up with just as good of an outcome as they did.
In addition to talking to them about their 200, 2,500-person town, 2,500, excuse me, 2,500-person town meeting, I will be talking with them about their health insurance transition as well, and understanding what our run-out costs might be, because we are partially self-insured and all of that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
John, anything you wanted to add? I don't want to forget you up there.
Oh, it's okay.
Anything from our attendees on the budget? No? Anybody online?
Let's check.
It's a very easy crowd tonight. Maybe it's intimidation for the new chair, I don't know, but.
Yeah, no one online right now.
Okay. Well, very good. In that case, we shall move on to the old and new business. First is to request.
We actually have number nine.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't mean, no, no offense.
Don't forget.
How could I forget? It's a great job with ADA. Now we move on to solid waste, so, yes.
I appreciate it, and thank you, Kristen. I think the timing of this is good, because we had two approaches when we looked at evaluating the recommendations that the Recycling Commission had made to you before, and one is, is obviously to meet their goal of waste reduction and increased diversion. So the other piece that we were very serious about from our office was really looking at how we can use this, really to generate cost efficiencies. So you all received a memo in your packet that does a couple of things. And I recognize Ken in the back there, he helped us put this together, and we've had several meetings, but you'll recall that they presented recommendations at a couple meetings ago back in March to increase the bulk sticker fee, and also to look at barrel limits. And you had asked us to go and do staff analysis and come up with a recommendation. We did a little bit more than that. We worked directly with the Recycling Commission to come up with a joint recommendation that we felt met everybody's goals. Their goal being increased diversion, our goal really being trying to generate some cost savings. And so those were the two lenses that we looked at when we evaluated those recommendations. And I'll encourage you to interrupt me with any questions that you might have as we go, but really wanted to just overview the recommendations themselves that, that are coming jointly from us and from the Recycling Commission, and that is that we do take their recommendation and increase the bulk sticker fee from $5 to $15. There's a few changes that happen underneath that to the overall bulk waste pickup and the white goods pickup that I can go through when we talk about some of the major changes. A lot of those are driven by what our contractor and their proposal covered. So that's really where we wanted to see is what, what opportunities were already in that contract that we've, that we've almost done negotiating that kind of drive our approach to the bulk sticker. So I'll talk about that in a little bit more detail in just a minute, but the primary recommendation is to go ahead and move from $5 to $15. Those, that sticker program would cover just the smaller bulk items that we have. So one item, 50 pounds or less per household per week. We've got provisions that I'll talk about in a minute that cover everything else, but that recommendation just covers that piece, the green sticker fee that everybody's accustomed to now. The second recommendation is that other piece, and you'll recall from our earlier conversations that we were concerned that the contract and that the way that E.L. Harvey was proposing to pick up bulk stuff, we had a gap. We had some pieces that we were missing that we didn't have an opportunity for people that might generate outside of our current barrel limit of three and that single bulk item. So that's what we worked with E.L. Harvey to come up with some opportunities for, and also look at taking the Budget Task Force recommendation of starting to transition some of those costs to the disposing household. And so we have an additional proposal within their contract to handle those additional services at no cost to the town. Part of that also is imposing some limits on weekly collection. These are limits that come from a variety of places that, that are already in place. So the existing Select Board policy on barrels, the guidance that's been posted to the website and recommended by the Recycling Commission for a number of years, and also the limitations that the contractor has in their proposal and that we have in the contract. So it's not anything new, it's just a very clear way of stating what we have and what we can take under that weekly connect, collection. The other piece would be moving the sale of recycling carts to E.L. Harvey, so all sales and delivery would occur through them and not through the town. You know, Ellen Hardy's handling a lot of that in conjunction with the town right now, so we're taking that off her shoulders. Had a good.
And we have talked to her about it just.
I had a great conversation with her today. I think she's looking forward to not having to tote those things around, so. So we're, we're moving forward with that. We're also going to have a, not quite yet a standardized cart, but a trash cart available through E.L. Harvey that will be a Westford branded cart. We're still working through what that's gonna look like, because the size and the type of that cart kind of factor into the last recommendation that we have, which is, we're gonna, we're gonna take another strong look at pay-as-you throw and variable rate pricing structure. So that's gonna be a longer-term initiative over the next year. It's part of the package of recommendations that, or the package of efficiencies that Kristen mentioned, but we felt it was important to, to look at the carts in that light, and make sure we had that kind of factored into the overall long-term plan for trying to move us towards a, a service that, that is a little bit more self-sustaining. So that, that really summarizes the recommendations that we've got at this point. There are a number of changes that are driven potentially by those recommendations, depending on if you decide to adopt them, but also just the way the contract operates and the way that, you know, we're, we're moving from Acme on our solid waste to E.L. Harvey. Acme has basically had a, a very long tradition in the town of, of good, solid collection, but the model has changed. We're moving away from manual, we're moving to a, a much more, hopefully, a more automated process in the future. All of the trucks that we're moving to are going to be staffed by a single individual, so the way their collection model works drives a lot of the changes that we're having. And we really don't have a whole lot of choice over some of those things, because that's the, that's the vendor that we have to move forward with, and they offer the, the service that we want. So some of those changes are, are simply driven by their proposal and what they can accomplish. The biggest piece, and I think one that we're gonna find is, is one of the most helpful, I know certainly a lot of staff will appreciate it, they're taking over all of our customer service. So they've actually got, and we've, we've verified with several of our neighbors that use them, they've got a call center that they run live people, runs Monday through Friday, eight to five, so we have an extra hour picking up on our ability to respond to calls. You can email, call with any issues, and you actually get to talk to somebody. Their center's in Westford. They're also open on Saturdays, which is something we haven't had in the past, is Saturday customer service. So that's an eight to noon service that they offer. They're gonna be standing up a webpage just for Westford residents. We'll work to make sure that aligns well with the messaging that we have and the information we have on our site, and we're going to be making modifications internally to how we communicate how that customer service works. Obviously, we're not gonna just turn it fully over. We're gonna be, just as a matter of procedure, if, you know, issues aren't resolved in 24 hours, we're directing people to call us, and we'll be following up with that. But that's, that's a big piece of it, is trying to really get a, a good consolidated view of the, of the customer service, so we can track complaints and, and really use it as an enforcement mechanism on the contract itself. So that's a, that is a big piece. We'll be working to push all that information out as we move forward, but everything we've learned from other people that use it, I've done a few test calls to the center myself, just to see how it works. I've sent emails, over three emails, the longest time it took somebody to respond was seven minutes. So we're, we're getting very good communication. Every time I've called, I've gotten a friendly voice and, and good communication. So we expect that customer service piece to be a really big change from what we have now, especially between two different vendors, and having a consolidated center that can handle everything. The other big piece that comes out, and this, this is gonna be something that we're gonna have to work with our residents to really make sure everybody understands it. Because they're handling both the solid waste and recycling, and, and really seeing the full picture and managing the full picture, and in the way that we've developed the contract, they're accountable for the waste that they take. They're accountable for cross-contamination, they're accountable for limits, they're accountable for unacceptable waste, and there's significant penalties. We've got a very clear schedule of liquidated damages. As such, they're going to be enforcing on their end as well, and every one of their trucks is equipped with cameras. They'll be able to record, you know, driver hits a button if he sees containers aren't out on time, he hits a button, he gets a five-second video from all angles showing. So we hope that helps us to, to kind of really be able to focus on, on, on the complaints that are valid, and be able to identify, you know, what was the issue that led to a complaint. And then also, they'll be able to use those cameras to determine as they're collecting, do we have violations? Do we have unacceptable waste being in there? And we'll have good evidence, rather than, you know, some of the calls we get now, we don't have much in terms of evidence, especially with vehicle damage, with cart damage, things like that. So we'll have clear, clear documentation of, of any kind of issues they have when they're out in the field, so that will help us. I say enforcement, there's gonna be a grace period. We're gonna have some time to learn the routes. It's gonna take them a few months to get their feet under them, understand the roads, understand the neighborhoods where they can turn around, et cetera. And likewise, it's gonna take, you know, it's gonna take a little while to get into the habit of proper stickering, et cetera. We do have a good sticker program with them for rejections at curbside, and based on the fact that they're accountable for. And based on the fact that they're accountable for the waste, once they take title to it, we fully expect those rejection stickers to be used, stating the reason. We'll push information out that shows what they look like, explain why anything was rejected. So we expect that enforcement is going to also help us ultimately reduce tipping fees, reduce our waste and start pushing more things into the recycle stream and donation. The other really big piece, and this is very different from what the town has right now, bulk waste is going to be handled differently. I'll just kind of run.
For items 50 pounds and over.
For items 50 pounds and over. So the green sticker program that we have right now, if you take the recommendation to increase the fee one, we'd have the fee increase. But we have limitations and this is based on what they're able to collect with one person in the truck. So we have a 50-pound limit per item, one per week. We're placing a limitation on that, that falls under our collection contract and we will pay the tipping fees on anything that goes. That's burnable waste only. So anything that falls outside of that then becomes something that the resident would contact E.L. Harvey directly and depending on the timing, they would schedule and they would pay a fee directly to E.L. Harvey. Now, E.L. Harvey then also has the, they have to bear the cost of disposing of those items and the collection. Depending on the item and, you know, when you get down into the white goods and some of the metal bulk items, those will, you know, they're going to have to kind of work through what the scheduling looks like. Right now, the bulk waste additional service is a once-weekly pickup, but it'll be scheduled if they determine that the frequency needs to change a little bit, we'll work with them to kind of figure out how that needs to work. But right now, we're expecting everything basically will be a weekly pickup, but it will be by appointment. So it may not be on the same day that your regular collection happens. But we've got, I'm not going to go through all the fees, but you'll notice they are significantly higher than what we have right now. I mean, you dispose of a couch right now for $5. You get into a couch under this new program and you could be 50 to 100, depending on the size of that couch. That is entirely paid by the resident, which is one of the goals that we had in the budget task force recommendation, is to start shifting some of these costs to the disposing household. And, you know, we have no cost on the tipping fee, no cost on the recycling, they retain any of the recycling revenues from those things, but they also bear all the costs for disposal. So, and I know that's going to be probably the biggest single change that our residents see is that process. We're still kind of working through a few of the pieces in terms of, you know, existing stickers that are out there right now, the transition with the vendors that are selling them, et cetera. But I wanted to stop now and ask, do you have any, are there any questions? Have we heard any comments, any feedback on that particular piece of the puzzle?
Yeah, I got a few. One, I think glaring one is the consistency in containers, right? So, and with trash cans, yeah, there's 32s, there's 64s, but these trash cans are kind of sort of trash cans. Recycling, we've got big toters, we've got small toters, we've got people with little baskets. And we've had this notion in town that we want to encourage recycling, whatever you put it in, we're happy to have it recycling. Now, if we're going to automate that, what's, I guess, what's it mean going forward in terms of?
So, you know, the current contract, and I'll cover all the containers right now because I think it's, that's an important point to have in there. So the current contract is for manual collection. The industry, the country, everything is moving towards automated collection. So we don't want to make any decisions or do anything that doesn't get us closer to that goal. Now that said, we also want to encourage and not place any limitations, restrictions or otherwise on recycling. So on the recycling side, we're going to encourage carts. We're going to allow anything, the contract will state that. So any container that they have, the only limitations that apply is we have to keep anything that's manual collection only, so anything that's not a wheeled cart has got to be under that 50-pound limit on the recycling side. On the trash side, we've got a size limitation, so a 32-gallon container is our maximum container we will take on the trash side. And that is really because we're trying to encourage the diversion, we're trying to encourage less trash use and eventually get ourselves to, you know, a fully automated collection ability. In terms of.
Can you just clarify? So 32-gallons barrels for manual collection?
Yes, for manual only.
To three of those.
On recycling, they can grab up to a 95-gallon container, no problem. And they'll do manual collection on the smaller containers, anything 32 and below. Recycling typically is much lighter, so there's not going to be an issue if they have a larger cart that is, or a larger barrel for recycling, as long as it's under that 50 pounds. We don't have a size limitation on the recycling, we just have the weight restriction and that's really for worker safety. So if they have a small container, if they have the old green toters, if they have a milk crate, they're going to take all that. So we don't, we want to make recycling as easy as we possibly can.
So secondly, relative to recycling is can we get to our residents a list of what you can and can't recycle? Because if we want to encourage diversion, we don't want to encourage waste recycling that's going to reduce our revenue or their revenues from.
I'll let Ken speak to that because they're kind of leading the diversion side.
Sure, you want me to speak up there or?
For them to hear you at home.
That would be so other people could hear you.
That's something that we always.
That's who you are, I have to say.
That's fine, so the public can hear me. I'm Ken Teal, 3B Verdant Drive, also recycling commission. We do put out a recycling guide that goes to every resident every year right at the beginning of July, and we're working on that right now. And this time, E.L. Harvey will be working with us on it. So that part will happen, that's how we communicate. We also communicate our recycling pages, we keep them current, we have all sorts of programs that are always highlighted in there, so the communication is constant. And anybody can call into our recycling user, our email into our recycling user line. And we get loads of residents that ask for questions. We have one particular member of our commission that answers the questions directly, George Haynes. But he also diverts it to the rest of the commission when we hit a puzzle. And there are puzzles all the time. And when there's a puzzle, we all put our head out there and figure it out. But there are resources to help people to know what to recycle and we really want to encourage them to recycle. And also composting. And just since you've given me this mic here, I think everybody should.
I have it on my list, so thank you.
Everybody really should be considering composting. And just using an average number, and this is the number we've been using, is that each family has an opportunity to divert 10 pounds of waste a week just by using a home composter. You're not necessarily going to use the compost, you may, you may not. I happen to, it's wonderful stuff. But even if you just divert it, what we're doing is, as a town, multiply that times the residents, we are basically burning water. It's 90% water, so we're sending to the incinerator 90% water on a huge volume of material. So that's all, that's my, you know, message for the night. But we do want to encourage people to recycle and divert and reuse and, you know, share. You know, junk in the trunk was a great idea that just happened, if anybody knew about that. But it gives people an opportunity to move things in their household that they don't want or use anymore to someone else who wants it. And it's a great, there are some great options and we're all for them. So have I done enough?
No, that's great. And I would say on the outreach, I was going to speak to the outreach piece next.
Can I just add one thing for the compost? Just want the board and members of the public, and I just got these facts late last week, we have finally hit our 125 subscribers from Bootstrap Compost, so we had signed a memorandum of understanding with them. So that actually means that your fees, if you're currently in the program, go down by a dollar. So it was $6 a week or $8 bi-weekly, now it's $5 a week or $7 bi-weekly. So they are fully staffed up and looking for more customers in Westford. We have diverted over 4,000 pounds since December per month, so 4,300 in December, 4,400 in January, 4,900 in February, 4,400 in March and 4,800 in April. So we're seeing consistent waste being diverted from our stream going to Covanta through that composting program. Thank you for letting me interrupt you.
Yep, absolutely. So, and if, let me, before I move on to the outreach piece, are there any other questions on carts or limitations? Chris?
No, go ahead, I'm done.
So on the recycling side, today we're expected to, if we have large cardboard boxes, cut them up into three-foot by three-foot squares. What's the process?
Recycling doesn't change. Recycling basically stays the same.
The expectation is to still do that.
Yes. What we are doing is the cart that they will have available is a little bit larger than what we have now, and that's to encourage more. We don't want to make any changes that would be detrimental to recycling, we want to basically keep that moving as much as we can and really push it. What we're anticipating is hopefully we'll see an increase as we make it a little bit more, place some financial incentive on pulling things out of the waste stream that will see that recycling level go up. We'll certainly see, just by pulling the bulk items that we're currently collecting curbside out of our waste stream, we're expecting to see some tipping fee impacts from that. But no, we're not, whatever they put out, as long as we're within our weight and size limits, just for worker safety, they're going to collect.
And while we're on the subject of containers, can we address the residence inquiry that we got this afternoon by email regarding, does a plastic bag constitute being, or can be considered a container for trash, for example? Obviously not for recycling.
The specifications that we have from E.L. Harvey are that they need to be in containers. If we need to look at changing that, we can come back to them and discuss that. But again, we're trying to move towards a much more standardized approach and containers are one step. That's, if we knew exactly where we wanted to head with a variable rate schedule, we would be discussing those cart sizes right now. But we're actively trying to encourage people to move towards carts with the goal of having, you know, eventually looking at lower limits, looking at different structures that we can have people pay a variable rate for what they dispose. And we've been, basically based on the contract, they're stating they want things in containers. That will also make enforcement easier because it will let us kind of do that count. I think in the first, you know, period while we're adapting to it, are they going to turn down a bag if it's the only thing out there? Probably not.
So, yeah, is there going to be a defined grace period? Is it three months, six months? What are we thinking about? I think we need something. I mean, I know on my road alone, right off the top of my head, I know three families that put bags out, right? In addition to this other resident that mentioned.
If it's the board's direction, I can certainly talk to them about having a specific time for that and any other guidance that you have in terms of container types, you know, we'll try to do what we can, but we are kind of limited by what the contractor is able and willing to do.
From your conversations, so at this point, you think they would be open to handling that for a certain period of time?
Yeah, they're expecting some grace from us in terms of their drivers learning the route. I think it's very reasonable for us to expect some grace from them. And that's, everything we've learned from their other customers is this is a good company to work with, they're going to, their goal is the same as ours. I mean, they want to see us change our disposal patterns, they want to see us dispose less, recycle more. That's how their model is built. So they're going to work with us to make things work and it's going to take their drivers a little while to learn our routes, it's going to take our residents a little while to learn the new process. What we most likely will be requesting of them is at least accepting issues where we have, you know, issues of cross-contamination or unacceptable waste, that the stickers be advisory only, perhaps for that first grace period. So, and that's something that they had brought up in our initial conversation, it's about educating our residents rather than being punitive. Punitive comes later, when we have a problem, if we have a problem, and we have real trouble getting people to adapt to the new system. But it's going to be about education more on the front end.
Sorry, just because you mentioned cross-contamination, I just want to clarify, is cross-contamination only going to be a force for recycling streams or will also handle, will they be inspecting trash and looking for recyclables in trash? And if they find recyclables in trash, will they not take the trash?
Yes, the contract calls for them to, they're responsible for that waste, they're responsible for unacceptable waste that makes it into that stream. We're also working on the Covanta contract on the back end for anything that makes it to the incinerator to see how we get an extra set of eyes on that stuff, just to make sure that when it comes in, if they're, you know, doing any inspections prior to incineration, that they're identifying whether we have unacceptable waste in that as well. So, to the extent they can. Are they going to pull apart every single bag and look? No. But what they're able to do with the technology available, they're going to be enforcing because they're on the road for penalties if they don't.
Yeah, I want to get to.
And Mike just has outreach that he wants to go to after you're finished.
I went to the question first, though.
Yeah, thank you. Kathy Lynch on Rush Road, and I'm hearing that we're going to have smaller containers for the garbage and larger for recycling. Are we going to be, is it homeowners supposed to be buying new containers and they won't take the ones we have? And is there a cost for that? Who's paying for that?
I guess it depends on the types of containers you have. On the recycling side, the only limitations we have are weight per container. So as long as that container doesn't exceed 50 pounds, it can be any type of container you want. On the garbage side of things, if you have a toter, for example, that is capable of being automatically loaded, so a wheeled cart with the lid like a lot of people have, like you get at Home Depot, that can go up to 96 gallons. We have no issue with that, they're able to grab that with the arm and dump it. It's when it's a manual, they got to lift it up and they got to throw it in the truck. So you're smaller containers. And typically, most of the ones that you find at Home Depot and Lowe's that people buy, those are 32, 35-gallon containers. In those cases, you know, we're at a 32-gallon limit. Per container size, you can have up to three of them at that point. So you're, we're not changing the volume, we're recognizing the volume limitation that's in there in place. And any combination of carts or barrels that gets you to that point can be smaller than 32. Now, one thing that has been brought up is if people do need to get a different container, you know, if somebody's got, you know, manual barrels that are 50 or 60 gallons sitting out there, they're not going to be able to use those, or at least they're not going to be able to use them full up. The town controls that bulky waste sticker, that green sticker. So if we have instances like that, yes, it's on the homeowner to purchase a correct cart, which they can get on their own or they can get one from E.L. Harvey. But we're exploring, how do we use our current green sticker? If we have a cart, for example, that you need to dispose of, we might be able to use that green sticker program to kind of take care of that.
Well, the ones that we have, I see them all through town, are just standard, the yellow top, it's a blue or green bottom, I forget. Are those going to still work?
Your recycling cart?
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely, we'll take that all day long. Yep. Many as you got.
I just, well, I think just to add that, of the bags, we had this discussion earlier, we heard from seniors who, you know, can't physically handle a big trash can, so again, the smaller bags kind of work. So at least in the short term, if we can accommodate that, that would be good.
We can certainly talk to E.L. Harvey and if that's going to, we can let you know if they have an issue with that. Are you asking, can we work on some type of a grace period?
Yeah, I just, I mean, again, in the context of the older folks who were here probably six months ago.
October.
It was dealing with the big recycling toters as opposed to trash cans. But same principle, if you've got a long driveway and you're, you know, not, you know, 25 years old anymore, it could be a pain to haul that.
Well, there's no minimum size, so if they have smaller containers that are easier to handle, they can absolutely use those, as long as they don't exceed the 32, which doesn't sound like that's the issue in this case. So if they have smaller containers, they can absolutely use those.
Sorry, Tom?
So I know tonight we're looking at a series of things that we need to make decisions on for July 1st, and then there's a longer conversation about pay-as-you-throw. What I guess I'd want to make sure is if we're going to have a lot of people going out to buy totes, I just want to make sure whatever tote we're specifying is consistent with what comes later because I'm sure you're thinking of that, but I would hate to go to people who have just shelled out some money and now they're going to have to shell out new money because what they bought in good faith is not compatible with what we're doing next.
Yes, and that actually has been the driving reason that I wanted to delay and we recommend it, let's delay the conversation around barrel, specific barrel types and barrel sizes because we do need that to be factored into any kind of pay-as-you-throw or variable rate scheme. What we've come up with for now is the recycling, we want the largest container possible. You can get a smaller one, but basically what E.L. Harvey's said they're willing to do is go ahead and have Westford branded carts made of the largest size for the recycling, so the 95-gallon cart for recycling. They would have those available for sale, just like we have the current toters. And what size are the current toters?
64s.
64s. They would have those available for sale to the residents, they would deliver them, they'll be competitively priced. If people want to use smaller containers or they have their own containers, no problem. Those are the ones that we're offering. On the solid waste side, it gets a little bit more complex because we've got to figure out, okay, what are the different schemes we would be looking at for pay-as-you-throw that would be automated? They're not capable of RFID right now and they're not capable of weighing carts, that would be a pretty big change. That would be a pretty big change for them, to be able to offer that technology to allow us to say what the cart size is, and then it just doesn't matter down the road, we can charge based on weight. We don't want bags for pay-as-you-throw because the industry is moving away from that. So what we're going to be doing in the next week or so is talking with E.L. Harvey and talking with the neighbors to find out what people typically use, and we're going to make a recommendation for one-size cart that they can stock, sell to residents, that will fit in the most of, the widest number of different schemes we could come up with, whether that's a 32, a 64, we don't know. We need to come up with something that works. We don't want to hurt ourselves if we have to change it. So we want something that fits in a couple of different buckets.
That's why the 32, because what we heard from the seniors was, they can't handle a 64?
Yep.
So 32s...
And there's also a 48.
There's a 48 out there, but you know, if we did the 48, then what is that, how does it work in a variable scenario? That's my biggest question right now, is we're going to have families that want to purchase larger capacity. We want to make it very, very easy and very, very affordable for people to do much smaller capacities and recycle and donate and reuse more. So we need a structure that either has, we either have to be able to weigh, which means RFID and special equipment on the trucks, or we have to have relatively different cart sizes that are available that have a variable price attached to them. So we have to make sure whatever number we get fits in that multiple.
My last question, I promise, which is...
No, you ask as many as you want.
Because contractually, the price of recyclables goes up and down with the market, right? So how is that, do they have a fixed limit? Do we share in...
That factors into, we basically, we kind of net out based on the commodity sales that they make. We have a monthly processing fee, the revenue goes against that if we get, you know, if they get sufficient revenue over that processing fee, we might get a check back. We have times right now, we get, what, a couple hundred bucks a month? I mean, we're more or less breaking even.
That won't change.
No change in that structure.
Yeah, and that's pretty much the way it is across the industry. So if we see commodity prices go up and we see recycling go up, especially of those high-dollar commodities, we might actually see some profit come in, but typically, recycling programs are, they're not huge moneymakers by the time you figure in all the costs. We're just, we're looking to divert from the incinerator side, which is very expensive.
So, you got Kristen, Tommy done?
I think I am done, yes.
John, anything to add?
Oh, yeah, just, you know, I think your suggestion on the shredding thing is pretty good, but if you talk about pay-as-you-throw, I think it depends on what could be considered a reasonable amount for families, for the town to pay, and then how much do they pay over, because it's going to be viewed as another way of avoiding a tax, or, you know, just another way of doing it without working within taxes. So it's just arriving at that combination of how much the town pays for and how much the argument pays for.
Yeah, we definitely hear you, John. The main purpose of this conversation this evening is to inform the select board and the residents of the changes for the E.L. Harvey contract starting July 1st. We don't want to make too many changes at a certain point in time. We know we will be studying pay-as-you-throw, and that will be a good six-month process with public input and reviewing structures and how this affects families as well. So I hear you loud and clear, just want to be clear with the board and the public that this evening's presentation is primarily of how we are moving forward with E.L. Harvey July 1st, and I think that actually dovetails well into Mike giving a one-minute or two-minute overview of the outreach that we have planned, if that's okay.
The one-minute...
Are all these changes within the budget?
Yes, these changes are within the budget as approved under Article 4.
Okay, and hopefully we will see some decrease in tipping costs as a result of the bulk trash changes, if for nothing else, pulling the disposal costs and placing those on the contractor. So real quick on the outreach, we're going to be doing a lot, and we're going to do, we're working with Ken to do, like he said, the existing tri-fold mailer that they have now, that's in draft form right now. We needed this information and a decision on the bulk sticker fee, so that we could place that in the content as well. We're using essentially every one of our electronic channels to push things out. We're exploring right now what's called a splash modal, which is a fancy word for saying a pop-up on the website that'll be able to push, at least connect people to the site. We've created a new, well, right now a new link, but eventually, you know, we'll have a QR code that we'll put on all the materials, people will be able to collect information anywhere they go on this. Every service counter we have in town, every publication, email list that we put out, all throughout the website, the recycling commission's website, and then we're also looking at doing some public forums where we can inform people either through Zoom or in person and let people know. I've recently polled all the different department heads to find out what the best way to interact with their customers are going to be, so we'll probably spend a fair amount of time with the seniors, with the library, and pushing information out through there. But now that we have pretty much moved past all the outstanding questions after tonight, we're ready to launch out really a full outreach plan, so it'll be very, very comprehensive every single channel we have available.
Did you vote anything tonight from us?
Yes.
So you want the vote of the $15?
I will let Mike lead the vote because we're voting on the...
Yep, so we would need a motion to...
Could I just, I was going to have one comment on the outreach. So, you've already mentioned this, and I know Ken's heavily involved in this, but just for the public, or just to say out loud, that there's an arc to solid waste and the cost it has to the town, two and a half million dollars of expense, that's a lot of money, and Westford puts more trash to the curb than our neighbors. So I just, I hope it comes through loud and clear, we're trying to fix a problem here. We know it's awkward to ask people to do things that are different, we know that, you know, change is difficult, we know that paying for things you didn't have to pay for is difficult, but the reason that we're doing it is because we need to get much, much closer to best practice in terms of what we're doing with trash. Our neighbors are putting out less trash, our pay-as-you-throw neighbors are putting out a lot less trash, and different communities have had different models that have been successful for doing this. So change is coming, and I just hope that the communication starts off with, you know, did you know that we're currently putting almost 20% more trash to the curb than neighbors? That's a real problem we have to solve, and I love what Ken has put forward before, here's what you can do to get on the right side of us. So, yes, we're going to take huge things out of the waste stream, you're going to have to pay for that yourself, that's not going to be the town's responsibility anymore because it can't be. And, you know, here's a bunch of things you can do to help reduce your profile, because tipping fee is what, about half the cost, right? So it's, there's a lot of opportunity there for us, just to get within the norms of what our neighbors are, that's a 10% savings on the overall trash. You know, it's roughly half, we could save 20% by just coming into community norms. So it's just a lot here, and I hope that we do start off with a high-level argument about why we're doing this, what the opportunity looks like, how people can engage, and then we'll get into the nitty-gritty, which, you know, we're going to have to go and buy a tote because we put out bags now, so...
We're definitely taking kind of a two-pronged approach on the communication, you know, that fiscal inefficiency savings, and then obviously the why we're doing it from the bigger picture. So I think we're going to hit it from all angles, and I do think we're going to be absolutely exhaustive with the outreach and hitting it from as many ways as we can. We're going to work with Ken and his group as much as possible.
I think, you know, in our company, we do look at economic impact work, and you say that the economic impact is, you know, a billion dollars, what's that mean? So we say, well, that means ex-fire trucks, ex-teachers. So I think if you're looking at this kind of thing for the community, if we reduce our tipping fee, or if we reduce our cost by 20%, that is how much salary we have for things like schools and police and fire and so forth. And a fixed budget also comes from someplace. We can take it from trash, which is just literally a waste of money, back towards services. That's, that is a compelling argument to get by you. Okay, so what is our motion to...
So your motion tonight would be to approve the increase of the bulk waste sticker, the green bulk waste sticker from $5 to 15. Kristin, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe we need a motion on the container standards.
No, we're still working on that, so you are correct.
Well, and we're within existing policy for everything you have right now. We're not changing any of those, we're just clarifying everything and basically memorializing it.
I did everything into one, yeah.
Yeah, memorializing it in the contract.
And we'll likely be back to change your policy regarding container limits, but we want to just launch this first before we do that.
And I would expand on that motion to say it is a $15 fee for green bulk waste under 50 pounds, single item burnable by household. Make it a little bit longer.
I'll make that motion.
Just a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye, thanks.
And the other change, Scott, if I could, just the other change that people need to be aware of is that anything above that weight limit, they now have to deal directly... We're not voting on that, that's a term in the contract.
Yes.
That's something that's in the structure of the way it's built, but people need to know that if they're putting a fridge out to the curb, they need to call E.L. Harvey, they're not going to be able to stick it down to the 50.
Correct, yep.
Elizabeth Sawyer, Six Holly Lane, member of the recycling commission. I think it's really important that everybody think of it as being multiple options with bulk stickers. The first is that there are so many ways to not have to even buy the $15 sticker, and then for those things that are over 50 pounds, those are actually some of the best examples for donation and diversion. So we are not advocating that you partner directly with E.L. Harvey to pay $100 for the couch, we're actually advocating that you not have to pay anything and instead donate it. So it's got these tiers, it's divert, if you can't divert and it's under 50 pounds, then yes, the green sticker, it's divert, and if you can't divert, then yes, you could have curbside pickup, and E.L. Harvey is one of your choices, but there are many other suppliers who may also be a more affordable option. So just wanted to make sure we're not advocating that you pay those top dollars, we're advocating you don't throw out things that don't have to be thrown out.
Okay, anything else?
Yes, all right, so on the grace period, you'll be coming back to the board with some updates on that.
We'll talk to E.L. Harvey and see, I mean, I have every belief they'll be reasonable, and we want to be reasonable with our residents. We need to make it about education. We have to get people to understand this is the direction that the collection is heading, and we'll figure out if we have time to kind of phase that in properly.
Does the board have any thoughts on what the grace period should be? I mean, six months, reasonable, or...
But I guess I need to understand a little bit better what, so they can't do a grace period on unacceptable waste, I mean, they're going to reject those things.
Be bags versus containers.
The grace period would be very specific, like if you're putting a bag out, or, you know, they're going to collect what they can collect.
Contamination is another one, I could see people needing some time to get...
Well, if they, I mean, if they're putting recycle in their trash, they're going to get rejected because that, E.L. Harvey will get penalized for that.
I see people who put trash in the recycling, so like, for example, they'll put the bags, like plastic bags full of, you know, recyclable goods in their actual recycling container, and that's a big no-no.
Yeah, we can't expect them to do a grace on anything that they could be penalized for. That would, if I'm them, I'm not agreeing to that. I think the grace period from my earlier understanding would be really restricted to, okay, somebody's putting a market basket bag out of trash instead of putting in a container. That's something that I think we can work with on a grace and help to educate people, we can figure out a way to, you know, make something work, and that's the education and a little bit of back and forth. But if somebody's putting trash in their recycling, we're going to reject their recycling. You can't have a grace period on that.
I think then let's work on just the grace period for the containers, and we'll move forward, and I hope that all the communication and outreach that you detailed will get through to the public and let them know that...
If they're in a cave, I can't do it, but everybody else, we're hitting every channel.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Moving on, request to approve National Public Works Week proclamation.
So Kyle Fox, our DPW director, is online for this.
Thank you, Kristin. Good evening, select board, members of the public. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm here to discuss and seek your support for the proclamation of Public Works Week, which is a time dedicated to recognizing and appreciating the critical role our public works professionals play in our community. Public Works Week, which we propose to celebrate from May 19 to May 25th, is a nationwide observance that shines a spotlight on the contributions and dedication of Public Works employees, who are often the unsung heroes in our daily lives. These individuals are responsible for maintaining and improving our infrastructure, ensuring safe and reliable transportation, providing essential services such as clean water, and enhancing the quality of life for all residents through parks, recreation, open spaces, and our town cemeteries. The theme for this year's Public Works Week is advancing quality of life for all, which emphasizes the role and significance that Public Works employees play in affecting the quality of life for each Westford resident, business, and visitor. The theme highlights the essential nature of Public Works and the tireless efforts of our employees who work around the clock, often behind the scenes, to keep our community functioning smoothly and safely. By proclaiming Public Works Week, we aim to educate the public about the vital services provided by the Public Works Department and the significant impact these services have on their daily lives. To recognize and thank the hard-working men and women of Public Works who dedicate their skills and efforts to maintain our infrastructure and public services, and to foster a sense of community and encourage residents to engage with Public Works projects and initiatives, understanding how they can contribute to and benefit from our work. Our Public Works team is committed to excellence, continuously seeking ways to improve service delivery, innovate in response to challenges, and ensure the safety and well-being of our community. From snow removal and road maintenance to water treatment and park upkeep, their work is fundamental to our everyday lives and our town's future development. I'm proud to lead this group of dedicated and skilled team members, and I believe that formally recognizing their efforts through a Public Works Week proclamation will boost morale and reinforce the value we place on their contributions. Therefore, I respectfully request the select board's support in proclaiming May 19 to May 25th as Public Works Week in Westford. This proclamation will not only honor our Public Works professionals, but also inspire community pride and awareness about the essential services they provide. Thank you for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions?
No, Kyle, I'm glad you're doing this, it's a point of pride in Westford. I know how well we take care of our roads and how well we take care of all of our facilities, so well-deserved and happy to support this.
So is there a motion to...
Thank you.
Motion to support?
So moved.
I'll second that, definitely.
All in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye, thanks, Kyle.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thanks, Kyle.
Request to approve 2024 annual appointments for committee and board members as we have in our bidding packet. Any questions, concerns, or motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Just a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, John?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And I'm an I.
Do we, is it, do we have to tell the public what they are, or is it just...
No, it's in the package, there's tons of them. But there are openings for town boards and committees, so fill out that activity form and we'll get you appointed as well. If you would discuss budget task force disbandment, so, Tom, do you want to, as the chair, co-chair?
Absolutely, so the budget task force was convened under a certain charter, just for those of you who weren't aware of it, it was, you know, 18 months of weekly meetings, very difficult work, amazing contribution from a lot of people, some are committee members, some were members of the public. I think it's an outstanding document that we're going to use extensively going forward. I think it's going to be a great roadmap for us as we find the efficiencies that we need to keep the balance of services right here in town. So just enormous thanks for the budget task force. The goal of the budget task force was really to do the analysis and present the analysis to the convening boards, which were the school committee and the select board and the finance committee. So that work has been done, so what we're talking about tonight is saying that that group convened around that charter has completed their assignment, and with our gratitude, we're disbanding that. That does not mean that the purpose behind the work is being put aside at all, we've already talked tonight about how we're moving into a full tri-board. All the elected and appointed people on all three boards are going to be in a purpose-specific meeting four times a year, looking closely at this, there'll be smaller work teams, I'm sure, that go and pull some of these things apart. So the important work of finding efficiencies and being ruthless and aggressive about finding them and developing them, that's absolutely going to happen, that's not what's going to happen if we disband the budget task force. We're just saying that the analysis work that group performed, thank you, we've really completed the work that was outlined in the charter, so that's what is on the table here on the table here tonight.
And I would add my thanks to, I mean, a great report, actionable report, a lot of research, a lot of dialogue went into that, so great job to you and I know your, all your members, co-members.
Oh, yeah, so many people did so much more work than I did. Yeah, amazing editorial work, and just if you're interested in how government works and how we look relative to other towns, there's extensive benchmarking, category by category against other towns like us. If you're curious, do we spend more than our peers on firefighters? We don't, we actually spend significantly less. If you're interested in, in per student school spending and how that works, because that's always a complicated problem, it's laid out very clearly in the document, so great resource and I think a lot of people are going to use it, I know we're going to use it in this continuing pursuit of budget efficiencies.
So with, with it, is there a motion to dismiss the task force with our thanks?
Yes, I'm moved.
A second?
All in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Request for the Lowell Regional Transit Authority to appoint Bob Rafferty to the LRTA Board, is Bob out there or?
Yes, he is, let me promote him. And just as a way of background, this appointment has been open for some time, your previous appointment had moved out of Westford. Bob is a Westford resident and also an employee of the Cameron Senior Center who runs the transportation program. We ran through the ethics with the state level just to ensure that he would be adequately a, a board member with LRTA and we do not see any issues with that, so he's filed a conflict of interest, uh, state with, with myself and the town clerk's office.
So Bob, any, any words for us or are we happy to appoint you, I think?
He is a panelist right now, okay.
I think the big thing for me is that the town is changing, transportation in the town is, is changing, and I'm in a unique position where I get to see how it is changing. We are adding quite a bit of low income and senior housing to the town, and even if we take the example of the Revert and McGuire housing, we added seven units and we saw over five hundred rides added in the first fiscal year that that housing existed. And I know that we have thirty-five town farm road coming on board should it make the next, um, grant cycle, and then if you add to that as well, the MBTA overlay district, I think we're going to see the landscape of transportation for the town change, and I think I have some valuable input that I could bring to the LRTA advisory committee as to what we see on our end and make it amicable for both the town and its residents.
Thank you, I thank you for your desire to serve. With that, is there a motion to appoint?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So thank you, Bob, and welcome to the town, um, town task force.
Thank you very much.
And finally, under this older business, we have a request from the Community Preservation Committee to review and appoint a full member for term expiring on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. There are three names here, Ellen DeSette, who I believe has decided she does not want to pursue this option, which is with Jamie Holmes and Matthew Brown. I think both are in, one's in attendance and one's online, so, given that we've got a list which is, let's just go with Jamie first, if you wanted to say, just express why you wanted to join and what your background is, we've certainly seen your application in the packets, but this is a chance to put a face to that.
Sure. My name's Jamie Holmes, Twenty More Road. I started following CPC more closely recently, I was involved with the NAMNASIT playground that was approved at town meeting, funding was approved for that through CPC, and just by watching those meetings and kind of seeing what they have come through there, I think there's a lot of great things that can be done with this money that gets a pretty decent return on investment. I did hear Kristin mention earlier that that's being reduced, which is a bummer, but I do think that this is something that can help us reduce our capital things that come through and also preserve those very important, you know, projects that, you know, open, open space, historical, and then also low income and recreation. So I'm hoping that I can be a part of making sure all of those things still come into play and being a voice that can kind of help guide the important things to come through.
Thanks, any questions from the board? John?
No.
Okay, thank you. Matthew, if you want to talk about yourself and why you want this position?
Hi, Matt Brown, sixty-three North Main Street, I, I served on my community CPC prior to moving to Westford, I was on the Randolph Conservation Commission and also on the Community Preservation Committee, and it's a great opportunity, you get to really kind of help move some projects along that I think really, really benefit the town, increasing all the elements that CPC can cover, and, you know, I've just, I've been on the waitlist to, to serve on a number of committees in town, and I think this was the first one that came up, so, just something I, I, I liked doing in the past and I think I have a, a good skill set to bring to bear. Been in nonprofit management my entire career, I was the chief operating officer at a pretty large nonprofit in Lowell, and I'm the executive director of a much smaller nonprofit in, in Concord, so I, I have a good understanding of, of all the different processes involved in both applying for and disseminating these types of funds for these projects.
Thanks, any questions from the board for Matt?
Yeah, so, Matt, is it Matt or Matthew, which do you prefer?
Uh, Matt.
Matt, so you and I have, have communicated, because I know on your, your citizen activity form, you were interested also in the Park and Rec Commission as well as a couple other commissions, so, do you have the bandwidth to take on multiple commissions if you were so offered positions at all of them, or is it you have time for one and, you know, which, which would be your, your choice?
I have time for one, I really couldn't take on more than that, and my first choice would be Concom, but I don't think there are any spots open, so, this is definitely another interest I have, I think Parks and Rec would also be fine too, I just, you know, I've been itching to get back into, to serving and helping and volunteering my time to the, to the town, and it just hasn't been able to, I haven't been able to connect since I've been in Westford, and we've been here for about ten years now, so just looking to, to get back into that.
Because, I mean, I know that we are desperately in need of some new folks on the Park and Rec Commission, so I would welcome, you know, your involvement as we've communicated over email. So if I had my druthers, I would say, you know, could I get you on Park and Rec and then I'd have Jamie take, uh, Community Preservation if that worked for everybody involved, but, you know, that's why I wanted to get your input.
I mean, that, that would, that would be fine for me, I mean, I'm more familiar with CPC, and like I said, I, I've served on a, on a CPC prior to, to living in Westford, but I'm not, I'm not, I don't feel super strongly about it, I think Parks and Rec would also be a good fit, so, you know, if that's, if that's how it shakes out, I'm fine with that.
Well, I, I'm going to throw in an extra potential bonus, right, is that, you know, Park and Rec has a seat on Community Preservation, so i- if you get on Park and Rec Commission, we could rotate you in to be our representative on Community Preservation, so there, there you go, you get to do both, which would be great.
You can actually be chair, you can, all worked out.
Oh, chair of what?
Second.
One, one stop shot.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So I, I don't, I don't want to, you know, prejudge, you know, what you want, Matt, I mean, is, normally at this point, we, we take nominations for, for, from the board, you know, if you can get to where you want to be with, you know, through Chris's path, I would.
Yeah, I think that, that, that works, because then everyone gets to, to, you know, serve in a capacity that they, they're interested in, so I, I'd rather not compete for a spot if there's something else I could do that is kind of in my sphere of interest, so that's fine.
I very much just personally, not as a board member, but just appreciate the fact that people in town want to get, want to get along and, and, and fill holes wherever they can best fill them, so I, I appreciate that sincerely.
No, no worries.
So with that, I think we look at a motion to appoint Jimmy Holmes to the CPC and hopefully, Matt, you.
So I've asked, I've asked Matt to come to the next Park and Rec Commission meeting, which should hopefully be in, in early June, and then just to, just to have him meet the committee, it's just my standard practice of, of new, you know, interested parties. Hopefully that'll be a good fit, and then, yeah, we'll get him on board through a town manager's appointment if I remember correctly, right?
I believe so.
Yep.
Okay.
Tom?
So just with gratitude to, to Matt and the skills that he's found a good, good way to apply to Westford, I'd like to nominate Jamie Holmes for this, for the Community Preservation Committee open position that's expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Just I've had a chance to work with Jamie and she's exceptionally well-connected with lots and lots of different elements of our community, so I think both communicating out to them to make sure they're aware of what CPC is and what it can do for them, and also drawing their input back in, I, I think she'll just be a really terrific choice.
Is there a second?
I'll absolutely second that.
So all in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Yeah, thank you, man, thank you.
Welcome, welcome Jimmy to the CPC.
It's a lifelong appointment, you know that, right?
Next up is minutes for approval and for release, regular session minutes of March twenty-third, twenty.
I just have an, so unfortunately, I was not able to get to the March twenty-third, which was our annual town meeting, and April twenty-seventh, which was our annual town meeting, so I'd asked for you to move those to your next meeting, the early, the regular session for April ninth and April eighteenth are ready, and the November twentieth executive session.
Okay, so a motion to approve and release the nineteenth, the twenty-eighth, and then?
The ninth and the eighteenth.
Ninth and eighteenth.
Right, and then approve but not release November twenty-eighth. So is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
You already have a second.
Okay, so all in favor, Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Board reports or updates? I want to just, as a Christian disabilities, thank Mike for his work and that we're working through this town plan, and I very much appreciate the notion of, we're not just trying to fill blanks, we actually want to really find out where we're short and, and approve that, so I appreciate your work with that. That commission has been kind of, you know, trying to find our way here and you've really been a burst of fresh air to help us make some progress.
Appreciate that, it's a good group to work with, they, they may, they may regret it, because this can be a hard process, so we are taking the hard way to, to do it, so I definitely appreciate that group's willingness to put the effort in.
Tom?
I, I have an update, which is just something I wish I'd said at the top, which is, thank you to the organizers for the excellent first responder appreciation event that happened last Sunday, or maybe it was two Sundays ago. It was a wonderful event, great turnout, and it's just great to see the community is gonna, is willing to sort of stand up and get out there and really show support and appreciation for the first responders, so it was a great, great event and thank you for all that organized.
Thanks, okay, and Kristin, over to the town manager's report.
Yeah, absolutely, so earlier this evening, you met an executive session to consider amending your settlement agreement to include Express Scripps, OptumRx, and other relevant subsidiaries relative to the Massachusetts Attorney General's opioid settlement process, so we'll be looking for a motion if you'd like to include and amend our settlement agreement.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, cheer.
Second.
All in favor, Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Uh, the next is to accept a donation from the Friends of East Boston Camps to restore and replace the Neshoba Lodge fireplace and chimney and any other projects at the East Boston Camps within the Stony Brook Conservation Area as determined by the Conservation Commission in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I'm an aye with, with our appreciation.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, they've been around for a long time and they have donated a lot of money to preserving that area and can't thank them enough. This is great.
And finally, under this section, to accept a donation from Dory and Larry Marasis for maintenance of the Ronan McGillicott Playground in the amount of five hundred dollars as requested by the town manager's office. Just to note for the board and the public, this couple is actually from Sudbury, but their grandson lives in Westford and they care for him often during the summertime, I think he's three or four years old, and they frequent this playground, and they wanted to do something nice to make sure that the playground was well-maintained, wanted to just bring that color to the conversation.
Very, very nice, very much appreciated.
And John has his hand raised online, do you see?
Yeah, I want to just say something about the Friends of East Boston Camps, it looks like they're disbanding, if I read that right, and they've done a lot of work over the years, and I especially appreciate that, being a former member of the Conservation Commission, so I just think we ought to acknowledge them for the effort that they put in in preserving East Boston Camps, and we have a, a real good camp over there, thanks in a large part to their efforts.
Yeah, I, I miss their fall and spring galas over there with pumpkins and hayrides, but, yeah, all, all good things do, do change, but yes, they did an amazing amount for that property and for the town, it's, they've been, you know, great stewards of that land.
So just.
Is there, is there a motion to approve the, the gift for the?
Yes, I'll make the motion to approve the gift.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, John? John?
Hello?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
I think I threw him, I went first, I'm an aye.
Great, so moving on to grants, and I'll, I'll take these together, if you'd like, the first is to accept a grant from the Mass Department of Environmental Protection for the Mass Electric Vehicle Incentive Program towards the purchase of one electric vehicle, and this reimbursement will be for the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars as requested by the town manager's office. This vehicle would be used for the purchase of a Department of Public Works vehicle. And then the next is to accept the Northwest Public Health Coalition Public Health Excellence Grant for shared services for fiscal twenty-five to twenty-seven in the amount of one million seven hundred and forty-four thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty-four cents, as requested by the Health Department, and just as a reminder, this includes the towns of Westford, Acton, Drakeett, and Lowell.
Is there a motion to accept?
Can I ask a question first?
You certainly can.
Yeah, just, can you just provide a little color to that, where, where that funding is expected to, well, it's going to the Health Department, but how they're going to use it?
Yep, so Ray Dick is on the line, I will have her speak to that, I know that some of the funds will be used to continue the Community Wellness Coordinator, the Regional Health Inspector, we are the host for that grant, so not all one million plus will be towards Westford, it will be towards other communities, but Ray, do you want to weigh in on that question as well?
Um, sure, could you repeat that, I'm sorry, there's a delay when they make your panelists.
Sure, I just was thinking for the general public and for people who watch this, maybe recorded later, it'd be nice just to provide a little bit of detail as to how we're going to use that money.
Sure, so this particular grant, as Kristin mentioned, is for the communities of Westford, Acton, Drakeett, and Lowell, this will be our second round of grant funding, we're entering our fourth year. This grant is about five hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars a year, and that pays for a regional inspector, who actually just started two weeks ago, she's here in Westford on Mondays. It pays for our community, regional community health and wellness coordinator, it pays for two consultants, a shared services coordinator who manages, helps manage the grant as well as writes other regional grants that we share, and then it also pays for all of our Health Department equipment and software for inspections.
That's great, thank you.
And Ray, this, this one point seven million dollars is for the three years, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
And sure, I will say that an admin cost of about eighty thousand dollars goes back to the town each year.
With that in mind, is there a motion to accept the grants?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Just a second?
Second.
All in favor, John?
I raised my hand, just to ask a question.
I'm sorry, I couldn't see it from here.
Ray, does that pay for anything other than the salaries of the people involved?
It does, so it does pay for all of the Health Department's inspectional equipment, so laptops, phones, things of that nature, printers, anything that we need in the field, plus all the software costs. It does also pay for memberships, it pays for travel, mileage, anything that any of the regional inspector positions need, and we do use admin fees, for instance, this year we're using some of those fees for purchasing AED for the town of Westford for some of our departments here, recreation and school fields.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
There's his hand, it's super, super delayed.
Delayed.
Sorry, John, we're delayed with, with your hands being raised, but, so with that in mind, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, Tom? All in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Tom, John?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray, very much. For purchase orders, we have a purchase order for tie sales for water meters and radios, accessories, in the amount of $20,185.82, as requested by the Water Department. And I'm happy to go to contracts, and, okay, and Mike can fill in if there's any questions here, as he's been leading these contracts. A contract for direct access for the ADA Transition Plan in the amount of $94,650, as requested by the town manager's office. That is fully grant-funded through the state. We're actually working with direct access. That, that amount may be slightly lower, and it may be going towards the Tecton Space Analysis Study, which we'll have for you at your next meeting. And then the next grant, excuse me, the next contract is with Beacon Integrated Solutions. Beth Greenblatt, who you may be familiar with for, that we've heard from before, related to the investment-grade audit, an additional solar exploration in the amount of $13,900, as requested by the town manager's office. And again, this is grant-funded through the meta-grant through the state as well. So both of these contracts are fully grant-funded, and, and none is coming from the Town General Fund.
Any other questions? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Is there a motion to waive it in the correspondence?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. And is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So thank you, Westford, and good night.